We will call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. As a reminder, we are not live streaming this evening's meeting as we announced at the last two board meetings, but a recording will be set up and will be available on our website in a few days. Jennifer, can we start with the Board of Trustees' roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalbinger?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Dr. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Unical?
Here.
Ms. Sheen?
Here.
And we have a quorum. Moving on to the consent agenda, before I ask for a motion to approve, is there anything anyone would like to have removed from the consent agenda and added under new business? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Janet. A second?
I'll sec.
Thank you, Barbara and Jamie. Jennifer, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Ripert-Patow?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Sheen?
Thank you. We will now move into public comment. Before we begin public comment this evening, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the members of our community who reached out to the Northbrook Public Library Board of Trustees to share their feedback and thoughts about the September 18th patron room booking and planned film screening. Per the cardholders' direction that the screening would not be happening, the library removed the booking from our reservation system. While we are unable to respond to individual messages due to volume, they were received and read or listened to. I understand that the room booking and planned film screening evoked strong emotions in our community, and we will continue to consider the feedback that we received. As a public government institution, the library is bound by the laws of our country, including the U.S. Constitution and the protections guaranteed by the First Amendment, which guarantees individuals' right to express their views, free from government interference, even when those views may challenge or provoke. The library will continue to uphold this constitutional protection as it applies to all viewpoints with regard to room bookings, balancing upholding intellectual freedom and adherence to the First Amendment, and providing access to all library services. We will now move into public comment. Community members wishing to share thoughts about any matter concerning the Northbrook Public Library may do so during public comment. The Board typically does not immediately respond to public comments or engage in open dialogue, but are actively listening to your thoughts, comments, and suggestions. Speakers will be recognized in the order they signed into the meeting. Visitors may speak for up to five minutes. Members of the public shall not speak a second time and may not give their time to another. The public comment section will not exceed 30 minutes except with consent of the Board of Trustees, and please know that the Board is committed to allowing time for all who want to speak to do so.
Our first member of the public tonight is Lee Goodman.
It's Nancy Goodman.
Order that was signed, Dennis Lee.
Oh, they're trading numbers.
Okay, thank you. First member of the public will be Nancy Goodman.
My name is Nancy Goodman. I'm a resident here in Northbrook. I don't think the mic is working. Sorry. Oh, it is. You just have to get it. Test pad. Can I get a little bit closer? Oh, sure. Is that better? Okay. Thanks. Okay, thanks. How's that? Good. Thank you. As I said, I'm Nancy Goodman. I'm a resident here in Northbrook, and I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the cancellation of the Israelism film. I haven't seen the film yet. Have you? Have the callers who objected to the film seen it? What I've read about the film is that it delves into questions that are troubling every thinking person these days, how diverse groups of people can coexist. This seems like something worth learning more about and discussing with our neighbors. It might be a controversial film, but it's not fringe. Noam Chomsky speaks of the film, and the library has many of his books. They haven't been banned or anything. The film has won many awards, including one from the Jewish Film Festival. What we're seeing here at the library is a huge overreaction by the callers who object to the film and by the library in being manipulated and pushing for the film to be canceled. The effect of censorship that people have to happen by requiring the patron who scheduled the film to pay thousands of dollars to hire a private security firm of your choosing is completely out of step with everything I've seen at this library. The Northbrook Public Library has always supported the First Amendment. When the Patriot Act made law enforcement agencies, authorities obtain library records about individuals and what they're reading and communicating without letting the patrons know what they were doing with it, this library effectively said no by stopping the practice of keeping such records. When a library policy was proposed to prohibit political content in meetings or programs that people could schedule at the library, be decided rightly not to police content, but to let Northbrook residents hold meetings on any topic they choose. You aren't banning books. You even have book reading this week that features and celebrates books that others have banned. This library stands up for free speech. It encourages us to think. It doesn't require everyone to agree. In the last newsletter, our library director listed three areas the library will be focused on in its strategic planning for the coming years to connect with our community, to build an inclusive culture, to create spaces to belong. How can we be a connected community if we can't hear from each other? How can we build an inclusive culture if some voices are excluded? How can we create spaces to belong when some of us are pushed aside by a misguided policy? Please allow the Israelism film to be shown, and please revise its policies so that this effective censorship doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next member of the public is Lee Goodman.
Thank you. I'm Lee Goodman. I'm friends with Nancy Goodman. In 2002, a lot of people in Northbrook did not want our country to invade Iraq. So a bunch of us got together and held a meeting right here at this library, and we organized what we were told was the first ever protest demonstration in the Village of Northbrook. The chief of police called me at home and said that he was going to have the entire police department on duty that weekend protect us. I told him I didn't think it was necessary. A few days later, we did hold our march. Fifty-five people walked through downtown Northbrook on a Sunday, and there were a couple of police standing as crossing guards. The Northbrook Police was able to assure our safety. Many years later in 2020, as it became clear that our president was not taking COVID seriously, we put up a sign at Triangle Park. Some of Trump supporters didn't like it. They vandalized the sign. They held a rockis rally. The Northbrook Police was able to protect everyone's safety. A few years later, a crowd of a few hundred gathered in the park right outside this building, behind Village Falls, part of Black Lives Matter movement. The Northbrook Police was able to make sure everyone was safe. Since the Highland Park shooting, the Northbrook Police has provided police services at a number of large gatherings, including the Fourth of July Parade here in Northbrook and also the Northbrook Days Parade. Last November, the police maintained order when several thousand people showed up at the Village Green Park to counter protest against a small demonstration by the exact same group that wanted to show the movie in this library. There were no incidents. Everyone was safe. The Northbrook Police was up to the job. There is no doubt that the Northbrook Police could have protected this library and its patrons if you had let them. Some people have been saying that the police told you they couldn't protect the library, that no self-respecting police department could ever make that statement. They might have told you that they couldn't guarantee 100% that nothing would happen because no law enforcement agency ever can make that statement, but I'm sure they didn't tell you that a few private security guards could provide better protection than the Northbrook Police Department, which not only has its own department, but all of the other suburban departments to call upon, and they do when they need them, and a nationwide network of state, local, and federal law enforcement and intelligence agencies. But you were getting pressured by some people in town who didn't want the police group to have another chance to be heard. So referring to anonymous, unsubstantiated emails that were emailed to you, likely from all around the country, you made it prohibitively expensive to show the movie here by requiring the group to have insurance, which the library already has for all events at the library, and by requiring them to pay thousands of dollars for private security. A requirement you have never, we are told, imposed upon any group before, even though you did have it as a possibility. You were looking for an excuse to keep the group out, and you found one, but you didn't really fool anyone, and thus you abandoned the First Amendment. Your actions have compromised the credibility of this library. You can't fix that by immediately this evening calling the people who wanted to show the movie and telling them they are welcome at the Northbrook Library to show the movie without charge, to reschedule. It is hard to admit mistakes, but I think you would find it harder to live with the knowledge that you had the opportunity to restore the right to free speech and you passed it up. I would also urge you to discuss this matter in open session, not in a closed session that seems to be indicated on your agenda because it is a matter of public policy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next member of the public is Edward Sampson.
I'm a resident in Northbrook. I appreciate the time to speak today. I hope you listen to the comments I make and the others I made. Recently, an organization applied and received permission to show a movie at the library. Other organizations came forward to protest the showing of that movie on the grounds that it was propaganda and biased in order to attract protesters. The library then set the organizers' requirements, including hiring a licensed and bonded security firm and obtaining liability insurance. This caused the sponsoring organization to cancel the movie. I watched the movie. I disagree with the viewpoint and the organizations that sponsored it, but my comments have nothing to do with the movie. I'm talking about precedent equivalent to banning books or controversial speakers. In this case, it was done by setting standards so high they could not be met. In other words, while officially welcoming a controversy, it was an actuality or de facto disallowed. Some of these remarks I'm following are from the case in 1977-78. In 1977, the Nazis wanted to march in front of the Skokie Village Hall, which were represented by the ACLU. Court rulings declared the Nazi group had a First Amendment right to hold their demonstration. Skokie then instituted several obstacles, including several hundred thousand dollar insurance bond and a ban on military uniforms during demonstrations. What Skokie did in opposition to the assembly came down to the legal term prior restraint. This meant Skokie wanted to find a way in advance to stop the Nazis. Later, the Nazis held their demonstration in downtown Chicago, where a thousand Chicago police were present in case of any disturbances, of which there were none. The First Amendment principles that apply to prior restraints are clear. While any effort to censor by punishing a speaker after the fact is likely to violate the First Amendment, preventing speech ahead of time is even more likely to violate the Constitution, even where anticipated speech is profoundly offensive and hateful. If the government has the power to prevent lawful speech, they can censor any speaker that government officials might find offensive. Again, I'm not in favor of the movie or the organizations who are sponsoring it. I'm speaking of suppressing something controversial simply because it's controversial or inconvenient. Free speech and the right to protest are American traits that must not be abridged. I would expect the library here to be the first to stand up for free speech. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment this evening. Moving on to staff reports.
As I mentioned in my report, I did not have time to do my usual report, and I wanted to just take a moment to read something to the Board to kind of share that kind of stuff that's been going on and what we've been navigating over the past few weeks. Because I think the Board is very aware is that we've faced very much an unprecedented situation, and it really has tested our resolve and our commitment to uphold our mission of championing intellectual freedom. I want to just take a moment to express my gratitude to all of the Board for your support and guidance over the past few weeks, and also to every one of our staff who have had numerous phone calls, gotten emails, and have worked very hard to respond to the public's comments, and have worked very hard and dedicated themselves to making sure that people had a way to funnel their comments to the Board and to myself and other members of the leadership team. Over the period of about a week, we received over 8,000 emails to myself and the Board, plus many of them copied as well to other departments and other areas of the library. I myself received hundreds of voicemails, and so the sheer volume of communication underscores, I think, the passion and engagement of our community. We have, as Stacy mentioned before, public comments. We've heard and listened to all of those and have read many of them. I'm still getting through all of them, and we are very committed as a library, as we always have been, to continuing to engage with all of the residents in our community. As the Board can imagine, navigating this has been a very delicate balance, and as a public institution, we are, as members of the public have said today, bound by the First Amendment and must and want to uphold the constitutional rights of all of our patrons. At that same time, we are acutely aware of the pain and strong emotions that this situation has evoked among members of our community. Our staff and I have worked tirelessly to take in each comment, to listen actively in talking individually with patrons, and make decisions that align with both our legal obligations as well as our commitment to be a welcoming space for everyone in our community. Even though due to the sheer volume of the incoming communications, I haven't been able to respond individually, as I like to, to every email and every voicemail, we have listened to the different viewpoints that have been expressed, and we have focused on acting in the best interests of our entire community while still adhering to our legal responsibilities. I want to also just acknowledge for a moment the mental and emotional toll that this has taken on our community as well as on the staff and Board. Our goal is to make sure the library is serving as a platform for all of the voices in our community while also being responsive and recognizing the various needs and concerns of our community. And so this is something that I really want us to be thinking about as we move forward, remaining dedicated to our library's mission, which we just recently updated, which says that our mission is to build community, champion intellectual freedom, and provide open access to the world of knowledge in a welcoming, inclusive environment. And that I know we spent a lot of time talking about with the Board, and the Board is also very committed to as well, and that remains at the heart of who we are and what we do as a library. I do want to mention a couple of events that we have coming up that I know I've mentioned in past reports, but that I think are very timely, and also I do have a couple of things that are unrelated to the other matters that I want to make sure the Board remembers. One of the things is that coming up this Sunday, in partnership with Cook County's United Against Hate, the Illinois Holocaust Museum, the Northbrook Community Relations Commission, and the CATCH organization, we are showing the documentary, The Upstanders, which will be followed by a panel discussion hosted by Cook County Commissioner Scott Britton, and that is going to talk about how we can reduce bullying and all become upstanders. I know several Board members will be in attendance, as I will, as will many other, as will, I think we are up to about 150 people registered, so we expect that to be a really positive and beneficial event. We also are doing, actually it's happening, as we speak, in partnership with the League of Women Voters, we are hosting Nobody's Fool: Why We Get Taken In and What We Can Do About It. This is happening online tonight with author Dan Simons as part of our focus on educating people and giving them access to information prior to the November elections. The program is focusing on why we are susceptible to misinformation, how to recognize it, and what we can do to empower ourselves against it. So while I know all of the Board has the great opportunity to get to be at this board meeting instead of attending the super fun program, this is something that we will have available, so if you're interested, let me know. And as I mentioned in my report, I will be doing more of a double report next month, but I'm happy to answer any questions on anything I've just shared or on, not that there was anything really else in my report this month, but on anything else that was in my written report.
I have a question.
Okay, sure.
So you went over some statistics. 8,000 emails, over 200 voicemails. I guess I'm curious, do you anticipate notifying the Board if there's a room request or a booking of similar content or nature in the future?
So, thanks, Damesh. That's a really interesting question. So the Board, of course, is responsible for the general oversight of the library, whereas governing governance as well as policies, and I'm responsible for the daily operations. If we do get any additional room bookings related to either this or anything else, as we have in the past, this is something that we will continue to handle from an operational standpoint. I also want to point out, I think the Board is all aware, but just in case, I'd like to talk about library law, and so the Library Records Confidentiality Act is something that is unique as a unit of local government to libraries. This is something that means that when people use the library, we can't just release information. We can't tell you, as you know, Mr. Goodman mentioned in public comments, we can't tell you what information people checked out. We cannot tell you who booked meeting rooms. One of the things that you'll note that we have never disclosed, nor will we ever disclose, who has booked a meeting room, because that is a library service and that is covered under the Library Records Confidentiality Act. Now, just as I would with any situation that might impact library operations, I will, of course, keep the Board very informed and aware if there is something that is happening that would impact that. So please know that I will do that, but we are not able, and staff are very aware as well, that we must uphold the Library Records Confidentiality Act and not disclose that. So short answer is, anything that might impact our services, I, of course, will share with the Board, and we probably will not be sharing every single meeting we're booking. Just in the last week, we've gotten about 10. We have a homeowners association meeting that's happening in the library, and so this is something that we will continue to, as I said, update the Board. Now I'm rambling, so I'm going to stop. I hope that answered, did that answer your question?
Yeah, actually it did. I was going to have a follow-up question.
Sure.
You actually answered it as well through the confidentiality.
So yay, yay for me rambling and answering two questions without even realizing it. All right. Are there any other questions that I can answer for the Board? Okay, thank you.
Moving into Board member reports, does anyone have anything they'd like to report out?
I was going to plug the upstanders. I was going to plug the upstanders, but you did that, Kate.
You can plug it again. It's going to be great.
It's going to be great, right? It's very rough. Please go.
And I was just going to share that my father came to visit from Florida for his 75th birthday, and the highlight of his trip was touring the Northbrook Public Library because he's heard so much about it. So it was truly the perfect end to his trip. I think so. I think he would agree. Moving into unfinished business, we have an update on the Village of Northbrook payroll change.
So Anna's going to be coming up, but I want to just give a quick update from our last meeting as when we spoke with the library board, and so we did have the opportunity to meet, and I did, I apologize, it wasn't in the other packet, but we do have in everyone's blue folder is an update that we shared with the Village. So Stacy and Janet, Anna and I met with the Village last week with the Village President, Village Manager, Trustee Kohler, and their CFO, Steve Drausner. They did tell us that there was no way, that they could not extend the time limit to have us start doing our own payroll and switch to our own FEIN number, and so we are still moving forward with the December 31st deadline that they gave us at the end of July. There are still some questions that came up. One of them was around IMRF, and at that meeting, while we were told that we would still have to separate, I had informed them that I had spoken with IMRF and that that was not, in fact, what IMRF had said, and that we could not legally separate regarding the pension, and so that is something that we did get confirmed with IMRF that I was, in fact, correct, and that we do have to have the Village process and handle all of our IMRF pension. So that is something that we are still working out what the exact details look like, if there are any ramifications for their other requirements for us. So Anna's going to share kind of what she and Becky have been working on and a little bit about what our next steps are.
So Becky and I have been working on this payroll transition. I started working with Julie and her team at Ansel Link to get an FEIN number. Becky and I had had discussions with five payroll companies over the last couple of weeks, and we have scheduled three demos for next week, focusing on companies that can integrate with Bambu HR, which is our existing HRIS, Human Resource Information System, and that can help us meet the deadline of 1125 to go live. We plan to send a survey to all staff so that we can create an efficient and user-friendly process for staff, because we know that this is going to be a change for them. System implementation will take place in October and November. System testing and training will take place in November and December, and we'll go live 11.
Questions for Kate or Anna?
I just have one question. Do we know yet what the additional cost is going to be? And I'm assuming this is, in the long run, going to be a taxpayer expense.
That is correct. This will be, this will increase the cost, the expenses for the library. Right now, we are estimating anywhere between $500 to $1,000 a month. But those numbers are estimates. Like, we didn't get, we didn't ask for hard costs in our preliminary conversations. We will get hard numbers when we do the demos. That's why we're asking you to buy that information cost, but it will be an expense for the library.
So, thanks for that update. I was pleasantly surprised at the schedule that you're able to fit in the demos, fit in the testing, and fit in the implementation by January 1, it sounds like, and you're confident because you've talked to three or four companies already, and they're all saying the same thing.
None of the companies were, that did not surprise any of the companies. That is their normal timeline to implement a payroll system.
And do you want to point out that we have started looking at all of our projects that we have and will have to be pausing projects as a result of this, one of which will likely have to be pausing the master plan, which we have planned to bring back to the Board in November, as well as some of our other projects focused with Becky and Anna. And so this will delay some things, so we're basically clearing the deck so that Anna and Becky can just make sure that we get all of this done. Anna, of course, also has to make sure we get all of the FEIN stuff taken care of as well, which is, there's the list in your blue folder, which, as you can see, has quite a bit, and I'm sure there will be things that pop up that we haven't anticipated. Anna has anticipated, as she usually does, just about everything.
I mean, Becky and I have looked at our current processes and the changes that we want to make, in addition to just the payroll processes, time recording, lead management, the cell service system that's... the self-service system that the staff have, the scheduling system. So there are a lot of things that we want to change to make this the most efficient process for staff. The staff. And it involves everyone, from the person who's entering their time to the person who's processing payroll.
Yeah, thanks for for all that information. And I guess the last thing I'll say is, given all those touch points you just mentioned and how critical it is to the whole staff, it's a whole change. It kind of changes their viewpoint sometimes if it doesn't go well on, you know, the administration and what you folks do, which is not easy, having experienced it on the corporate end, obviously. I just suggest that when you do make your selection with respect to the payroll processor, you try to embed in your, I guess, in your launch, these checkpoints and ensure that they meet the timelines, because that's going to be tricky still, and then keeping your colleagues satisfied with respect to the training and all that's going to come their way. It's all going to be new, especially for the tenured veterans and stuff like that. So thanks.
Just made it sound so fun, Damesh.
Kind of almost very similar to what Damesh, it's like, just because this company feels comfortable to deliver this, they're just like, I just want us to also consider other risk, like the, you know, employee experiences with others that this is, like, we're literally, just because they're comfortable doesn't mean we're not crunching things that's actually in a very uncomfortable manner. So wanna kind of just say thank you to you guys, but at the same time, don't hesitate to let us know if things just did not go as planned.
Any other questions for Anna? Well, I'd like to thank Anna and Becky for their leadership on this, and Anna and I have had several conversations about prioritizing the staff and their experience. So I think we're all in agreement that we want the transition for the staff experience to be really positive and to ensure that it's seamless with the January one cut over. So thank you, Anna and Becky, for your time. Moving into new business, we'd like to welcome Ed Tracy from Selden Fox, who will make our presentation about our annual audit.
Well, thank you for having me here this evening. Before I started, let's thank Kate and the rest of the team for all their assistance they provided us during the audit. The process goes smoothly, and so we certainly appreciate that. You should have three documents from us in your package, and I'll try to go touch on each of them in the order they come up in your packet, at least from what I looked at online earlier today. The first document in your package was our communication with those charged with governance. This is a letter that required issue to the management and to the board and address specific items as it relates to the audit. And really, I think where this letter is important is if there's instances where we weren't getting cooperation, or there's instances where there was disagreements with the accounting treatment of a particular transaction or something. This is where we'd have to bring this to the board's attention. We didn't have any of those matters. Didn't have any disagreements, and it was cooperative and provided everything we asked. So in that respect, the letter becomes a little kind of boilerplate. There is a couple exhibits to the letter, though. The first exhibit is our, the adjustments we made during the audit. There were four in total. However, three of those were to government-wide financial statements, and I'll get into that if I talk about the other reports, two of which came from management, one related to the pension liability, and that comes from the village governors, and a second related to the OPEB liability, which comes from the report by the actuary. The second exhibit to this letter is including one uncorrected, or what we call past adjustment journal entry, related to a new statement on software leases and the fact that this new state was not material to the library. So we just make the past adjustment for it. The second document that we included in our packet is our management letter. So we do take a look at internal controls when we do our audit. We evaluate controls to determine the extent we rely on them. Yeah, but we're not issuing an opinion on internal control. That's not what a financial audit is. But if we do identify any weaknesses, we call them significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we would bring those to your attention in the management letter here. But again, we did not have any of those. We found the controls operating in design, they were effective. And so we, the management letter is just consists of descriptions of upcoming statements, which are an issue by the governmental standards board or GASB, which would be, which have an issue but are not effective. We're just kind of making you aware of things that are coming down the pipe. The final document is the audit itself. It begins with our independent auditors report, which is an unmodified opinion. So that's the highest amount of assurance we can give the financial statements are fairly presented. Then comes the management discussion analysis section, which is kind of a narrative overview of the financials, financial year for the library, and includes good comparative information. And then the financial statements begin. As I mentioned before, there's the government-wide financial statements, which are page nine ten, and then the fund financial statement. Difference being the government-wide financial statements is more of a long-term perspective. The fund financial statements is more of a current perspective. Just a couple of highlights from the financial statements, and it really shouldn't contain any surprises, because like I said, we didn't make much in the way of adjustments. As far as the government-wide financial statements are concerned, the library's overall, and actually in bold, bold statements, the library's overall cash investment position increased by about nine hundred thousand during the prior year, or during the current year under audit, while still paying down the four hundred thousand with debt principal. From a government-wide perspective, so the long-term perspective, library reported a positive bottom line for the year of one point two million. Last year, that number was about three hundred seventy six thousand. In the fund financial statements, which again is more on a more of a current perspective, it's called modified accrual. Basically, it doesn't record long-term assets and long-term liabilities. So if you buy a truck in the fund financial statements, it's an expense. Well, you're probably not that truck. But if you buy, if you buy in, in, in the government-wide statements, put on the balance sheet as an asset and appreciate it over time. So under the fund financial statements, there's more modified accrual basis, the library had binded across all the funds of seven hundred sixty four thousand. And that compared to last year, it was about nine hundred fifty seven thousand. So in both cases, a very positive financial year for the library. The general fund had a positive bottom line of just over a million prior to transfers out to the debt service and capital improvement fund. And revenues in the general fund were about zero point nine percent under budget. Expenses were about seven point eight percent under budget. So overall, the results were favorable to budget with biggest savings in the salaries and employee benefits category of general fund. If I have any questions on any of the reports, overall, I would just say that, you know, books were in really good order. We appreciate the assistance we got. We're able to come in here if we're done with limited adjustments.
Any questions? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to accept the fiscal year twenty four audit as presented?
So moved.
Thanks, Maura. In a second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. And we need a roll of them.
Mr. Krishnam?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Inspector Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
And Ms. Yu.
Thank you very much, Ed, for being here.
Thank you.
Up next is the fiscal year twenty six tax levy draft presentation.
And because of how we had to set up for the board meeting tonight, we printed out the presentation and put it in everyone's packets. Normally, of course, it would be on the screen. And so I am going to kick us off, and then when Anna comes back from walking your auditor up, we will have her go over stuff. So as we have in previous years, Anna has put together a range of options for the board to discuss tonight. There's no action being asked for tonight. This is simply to present the board with information. And then the discussion and approval will happen at the next meeting. So as soon as Anna comes up, we'll get started. Oh.
Yes, this is not offered.
Sorry, I left my copy of the presentation.
Another one. Do you want to go sit down? But I need to place this, and you can use the other one. You got it together.
Okay, so when I start to think about the levy, I look at prior year data and do a comparison of three years. I try to forecast the current year. And then I estimate what I think we're going to need for the next fiscal year. So that is included in the packet, and it kind of looks like a budget. But it really, it's just my forecast to kind of estimate where we need to be for the levy. And then once I do that, I think about what we need to do from a compensation perspective, and I think about strategic plan initiatives and make some adjustments to the numbers. I look at the facility plan, and I also look at our technology plan. And, and I put together some numbers. So the, the document that you received shows that we, that I think we're going to need a four and a half percent overall tax levy increase. But I did provide some different options, options that keep the total levy flat, the operating fund levy flat, a two point eight percent overall tax levy increase, and a three point seven percent overall tax levy increase. So I think, you know, you can look at the numbers and ask questions. But then in the data as well, there is a history of what the tax levy has looked like over the years. So projects that I considered when I was looking at the documentation, when I was talking about compensation, is the pay equity audit that Becky will talk about in a little bit. Master plan from a CIF perspective, we want part of our strategic plan was to have data-driven collection management decisions, doing some AI programs to educate the community, and we would also like to create some data dashboards to help us with decision-making moving forward. We have a facility plan that goes out by years that we have been following to look at just aging parts of the building to make sure that we're keeping everything work in working order. We also have a technology plan that helps us make sure that our technology is being updated in reasonable time. We also want to think about safety and security improvements that we've talked about over the years, and Kelly will be talking about those.
So those are all things Anna considered. I wanted to share a little bit more about some of the projects we have, as well as just some of the market factors that we take into account when we're considering what we need. So the social security cost of living adjustment for twenty twenty five is estimated at two and a half percent. One of the things that the board in our compensation philosophy that was developed last year said is that we'll also be looking at the Consumer Price Index for the Chicago Naperville area. And right now, it is at a three point eight percent increase year over year. Illinois, as of January twenty twenty five, they've been working on updating the minimum wage over a five-year period, and it's now hitting the fifteen-year, fifteen dollar amount, which is where it will stay. We have, so all of those numbers have decreased a little bit in, over the last year. The Bureau of Labor Statistics unemployment has unemployment in Illinois decreasing to five point three percent. And I'm going to have Becky talk a little bit, because the other thing we need to consider when we're thinking about our personnel costs is the pay equity audit. As the board may recall, last year, we updated our salary benchmarking and did a number of adjustments. And so now, now that we have Becky on the team with us, she is working on a pay equity audit and is going to talk for a couple minutes. I stand or can I sit? You can sit or stand. It's up to you.
Good evening to all of our board members. It's great to see you all. So as Anna and Kate have already alluded to, I will be conducting a pay equity audit. It's one of my top priorities, along with the payroll and timekeeping transition. And I do see the pay equity audit as directly aligned with the Northbrook Public Library's compensation philosophy, which you all, as the board, are well aware of and have already approved. This audit underscores the library's dedication to maintaining internal pay equity by ensuring that similar roles within the library are paid fairly and equitably throughout the whole organization. With this audit, I'm really intending to take a thoughtful and importantly, data-driven approach. And in addition, as collaboration is one of our key values here at the library, I will be engaging with key stakeholders throughout the library, including members of our leadership, management, our staff, and external thought partners as well, including our EDI consultant, Zane Consulting, to ensure that we are maintaining clear and consistent communication throughout the audit, all steps of the audit. And as a result of this audit, I am anticipating that there will be pay adjustments that I would be recommending to be addressed. So I want to thank the board for their steadfast commitment to the EDI efforts at the library. And as an HR professional, I am, you know, looking forward to conducting this audit and sharing my report.
Thanks, Becky. On the next page, I did have, we've had this the last couple of years, just kind of giving the board an idea of where we fall in terms of the overall monies that we're spending. Personnel, as we've often discussed, is the largest portion of our budget, and that includes not only salaries and wages, but also benefits. As you can see, comparable to other libraries, we are pretty much right in line. We do recognize that we're a little bit under the overall amount that we're spending within, compared to the state. That actually is a good thing, because what that means is that our budget is robust enough that we are not, as many in the state have, especially libraries, have to spend more than they can, than they can really afford. Sometimes they need a larger budget, but we actually have a really solid budget. And so we try to keep our costs between fifty and seventy percent, which we're at fifty five percent for salary and sixty five percent when you include all of our benefits. Of course, one of the things that Becky and I will be looking at is our benefits packages and looking at if there are opportunities where we can save money for staff and the library while maintaining the really great coverage we have. That's something that we'll be looking at in twenty twenty five. And then Anna is going to talk a little bit about some of our other insurance stuff that we have. Oh, sorry, Jamie. Yeah, sorry.
Just real quick on this number, this is like currently what we have, and
Correct.
I heard the, I guess, next year is what we're looking at right now. We're with all the initiatives you guys are taking, we're maintaining the percentage. Is that the?
That is, that is correct. It, it was previously fifty four percent, so it did go up to fifty five percent. And just to be fully transparent.
Fifty six next year.
Yeah, it might be. And if you, if you recall, when we did the benchmarking, we did do a kind of projection to see if we made all of the changes and every single person that we had on staff remained. What would that look like in terms of a year-over-year increase? And while we would expect to see that percentage go up a little bit, it was still very much in keeping within the levy amounts that we've levied over the past twenty years and in keeping with maintaining a solid budget and not having like eighty percent of the budget be salaries. Which I'm happy, if that is something the board is interested in, we can share those numbers again. I love, I love a good spreadsheet, so any opportunity. So, right. So Anna is going to talk a little bit more about some of our other fund insurance stuff.
As Kate mentioned, we are going to look at medical dental vision increases. I kept the numbers where they're at. I didn't decrease them because I wanted to be conservative, because we don't really know what that looks like, and we've not really looked at insurance numbers in a while. So you won't, you will not see a decrease in the medical benefits in this, in my forecasted numbers or my estimated numbers. Just I was trying to be conservative. in my forecasted numbers or my estimated numbers, just I was trying to be conservative in that regard. But our insurance agent for general liability insurance, our auto insurance, our cyber insurance, our directors and officers insurance, the flood insurance that we have, I mean, those costs go up every year, unemployment insurance. So we, and he just keeps telling us about the costs related to cyber insurance. So we look at that and we try to monitor it, but there is a small increase for insurance costs.
Of course, the thing that most people think of when they think of libraries is materials and programs. And so we are continuing to see high usage on our downloadables. As I have spoken about with the board previously, we are definitely seeing higher price tags being put on downloadables for libraries. And this continues to be an issue. There is legislation that hopefully will be proposed in the state that has been proposed in other states to make it more equitable. I will also say that we continue to see an increase in overall circulation. Many libraries have seen like a dip. We did see a little bit of a dip, but our numbers continue to increase. And I, I think that that just goes to show how engaged the community is, which is wonderful. But it does mean that we not only have to monitor the downloadable costs, but also the increasing costs and the impact that, on paper and the impact that's having on book pricing. So if you've popped into Bookbin recently, I encourage you to look at just the standard retail price now. You know, you used to assume like, oh, you know, hardcover book, maybe like 22, 25. And now on average, it's like 27 to 30 or higher. So that is definitely something that when you're buying a couple thousand items every month, as we do, has an impact on the overall budget. We continue to have our hybrid in-person and virtual programming. So that means maintaining kind of multiple platforms and the technology to go along with it. So that is something that we continue to make sure, you know, Kelly works closely with OSG to make sure that there are strong technology replacement plans in place. And then we continue to be dedicated to our sustainability efforts in looking at ways that we can do programming sustainably, doing things like making sure we're buying, if we're offering snacks, compostable plates, and making sure that the choices that we're making when purchasing items for programming are done with an eye towards the impact on the environment. Now Anna's going to talk about fund building and technology stuff.
As Katie mentioned, Kelly works closely with OSG and they put together a technology plan that is laid out when we have to do replacements, which is very helpful when we're trying to forecast spending. But with our building, we have a lot of systems that are reaching end of life, like the elevator modernization project, the building automation system upgrade that needs to take place. And all of those systems are a little more complex than they used to be. So we need to take that into consideration when we're talking about the building. In the facility plan, while it helps us, simply while we try to keep equipment for as long as possible, we, you know, we have mapped out spending for the facility plan. Another thing related to technology that I forgot to mention is software. Used to be able to buy a piece of software and keep it for five, 10 years and not have to make any adjustments. But now it's a lot of subscription rate-based pricing, which means you have to pay for the software every year. And, and that, you know, adds some expenses. So we need to keep that in mind as we, as, as we do that, as we think about spending.
As we all age, we have to think about the different impacts, right? Kelly's going to talk a little bit about some of the safety and security concerns, which as you can imagine, over the last couple of weeks, we have definitely been keeping top of mind.
Just stand up here, so I'm going to look in a different direction.
Sweet.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I also wanted to mention with the subscription-based models that we're seeing, there's a lot of individual license requirements. So in the past, you might be able to buy Microsoft Word and have it stay with the computer. And now they're going to, they're not there yet, but it's coming where it's going to be individual license per user and not transfer over. So that is going to add a lot as we're seeing that more and more with a lot of the internal, as well as public facing licensing that we're using the subscription model. It's going to have impact on us financially. On safety and security, which also unfortunately has impacts on us financially. I do want to just say thank you to everybody for their support over the past month. It's been, it's been nice to know that the staff and the community and the board are out there and watching what's happening and have our backs and I really appreciate that. In terms of next fiscal year, a lot of the things we've been talking about for this fiscal year are moving into next fiscal year. So the upgrade of the security cameras, alarm, door locks and paging system that we've been talking about was actually in our strategic plan, activity plan placed in year two. So we're coming up on year one, that's going into year two. So we'll need to start budgeting for that in the upcoming fiscal year. We also have talked about working with a security consulting company called Jaffe. We got to a point where we had a proposal, but again, we needed to push based on their priorities. And so I do anticipate a lot of those costs coming up next fiscal year. I think that will help a great deal with us being able to ensure that when we do do the bigger technology improvement projects, like with the security cameras, we'll have experts on staff that can help guide that, or not on staff, but that we contract with that can help guide that process. So looking forward to moving forward with that as soon as we can. And then of course, just wanted to also mention, we have recently had the need to pay either off-duty Northbrook police or private security based on needs for events. I would anticipate that becoming an ongoing cause over the next fiscal year. So that plus just the general rising costs of everything in the world. We definitely need to continue to advance all of our IP systems to protect us from cyber attacks. So of course we have that large cybersecurity cost, but we're also always looking at the systems that we have in place internally to prevent those things from happening and those costs are rising as well.
Boom. Just to give a quick summary of all this cheerful stuff that we got to share. Our focus continues to be the strategic plan goals and action items that the board has set. That is, those are the things we want to be focusing on. Those are the things that we know are important in providing for our community, providing for our staff, providing for the library. I will say that this world that we are living in is changing rapidly and we keep encountering really complex situations that we are having to figure out how to navigate. Just within the last five years, we've had, I've been in libraries for 25. And in the last five years, I would say I've spent probably 70% of my time, but maybe not 70, we'll say 62% of my time, doing things that I have not ever had to do before. And that I don't see changing. So the challenge is going to be, how do we, how do we continue maintaining services? How do we make sure that we have the money in order to hire the people that can help us do these things that we want to do and also navigate these complex challenges that arise? That I for one, there's a joke in libraries of like, oh, they didn't teach us that in library school. And I, I loved library school, I loved getting my MBA. And I would say that aside from my dedicated love of spreadsheets that I get to use often, a lot of this stuff is all new and it's not just new for me, it's new for Kelly, it's new for Becky and for Anna. And we are all working as hard as we can to figure stuff out, as are all of our staff. But being able to have expert people that can help us figure it out is really critical and to make sure that we don't hopefully horribly mess up. That being said, I do believe very strongly that we are the stewards of our community's tax dollars that are coming in. And we have a responsibility to provide what the community is looking for, which we know, which is what drives our strategic plan. And to make sure we're meeting those needs, but also being fiscally responsible and recognizing that you can't just keep increasing, just increase. And I think the board has always taken a very thoughtful approach and Anna has always taken a thoughtful approach to that, as I expect that the board will do with this current levy process. But just kind of to, yeah, that, that was my, that was my little summary. And then just to remind everyone, kind of like what comes next before we get into questions. Of course, today we'll take any feedback and I know this is a lot of information. So as always, Anna and I are happy to sit down individually with any board members, to answer questions by email or by phone. At the next meeting in October, the board will review based on any recommendations or changes that you'd like us to make and vote on what you would like the levy to be. The levy, because we're a village library that goes to the village to approve with their levy and then the village sends it to the county and then the county then processes all of the levies. And that is what then gets sent to taxpayers, which then in turn comes back to us in fiscal year 26 as 93% of our operating revenue. So that is kind of the next steps in this process. And Anna and I, as well as Becky and Kelly, are happy to answer any questions on any of the stuff that we talked about or on anything with the levy.
I'm not saying you have to have a question, I just.
I know, thank you.
But you can.
Questions for the board?
Yes, I, I always comment, right? The, the building and technology area, Anna, I liked how you split out like with salaries. You sort of have benchmarking. We've talked before about how we have larger square footage, we do have an older building. I would expect that we do have higher expenses associated with the older equipment and stuff to maintain a building of this size and age. Do you benchmark against Glenview, which is newer, or Deerfield, which is smaller, when it comes to building costs? Is it transparent?
I, I have not, but I mean, I could, I could get information from that.
I tend to believe that we would have higher expenses and sometimes.
I mean, I think it would, it might be a little hard, only because they might report things a little differently. So I would have to like really get into, it would be a pretty detailed task, but I can do that, that's not a problem.
We do have, we do have data and can benchmark against libraries that are similarly sized to us as well, like Indian Trails. Everybody's terrible. In 2017, they of course did a major renovation and switched to geothermal. So I think from like just an energy perspective, it would be interesting to see. So if that's something that, some of that data we have available to us in the IFLAR and can pull it from there, as well as from the library services from HR source with some of the building, the supplemental report. And then can get more details. That was more for, those last two sentences were more for Anna, like there's data here that we already have.
Yeah, I want to be careful asking for you to go day in mind for data, but more just stay cognizant that it helps bolster the case to, you know, see larger levers, to be the situation we want to be able to build your square footage.
Our 1969 building that has had two major additions put onto it is aging gracefully, thanks to Anna's hard work.
Yeah, great work.
Other questions?
Are there any other scenarios that people would like Anna to run? This is her favorite question. She's given us several and Anna, thank you, we haven't thanked you yet, this is excellent work, as always.
No thanks needed. But I mean, are there any other scenarios you would like to see? Anna?
Oh, Janet, yay.
I know your recommendation and I wondered if, if you were asked, what would happen if, if, you know, you, your recommendation was sort of the one ticked down, what would change?
That would make it work, Jamie. I realized that. No, I mean, we would just have to, you take a little bit from here, a little bit from there and then you, you made it work, so.
So we have certain percentages that we always try to hit. We try to hit 12% with our materials. So if we took it down, that means a reduction in the overall number of items that we would be able to purchase for the collections. If with personnel costs being our largest percentage of the budget, that ticks down. So that means that when Becky is making recommendations with the pay equity audit, if it's like, oh, it's going to cost us $50,000, or like, let's say it's $100,000, but we only have $50,000 now, then that would be deciding, okay, are there some we can do this year, some we can do next year? Again, it's, it's, Anna will make it work, but certainly there are ramifications to all of these. And while Anna does have conservative estimates, I think the building costs are something that I see in a lot of the presentations that I give for new library directors, is they'll look at the sample budgets I put together and be like, well, that's not enough for buildings or that's a ridiculous amount. It varies greatly based on the age and size. If your building is brand new, Glenview's is now 20 years old, in fact. So they're also reaching some end of life, or 15, I think it is. But that certainly is taking an additional cost. And while we have budgeted really carefully for capital improvement costs for those larger systems, there are more things that break. And so then it's a question of like, we want to be able to be thoughtfully proactive in maintaining systems. When you start reducing, while I don't think reducing by one step would force us to do this, but if it was like, for instance, only like a 2% increase, what we would then have to say is like, okay, well, we're going to push this off. We're going to try and squeeze a little bit more out of it, which inevitably will have ramifications down the road for those larger building costs. Because if you're not doing some of the preventative maintenance or you're not maintaining and fixing the littler things, then they of course grow into bigger things. And we continue to see costs increasing when it comes to construction and building maintenance costs. So that was probably more information that Anna wanted me to like put out there. She's like, well, make it work, we'll just make it work, which I know, I think Janet, what you're asking is like, at what cost?
At what cost and what, what do you do to make it work?
Yeah.
Any other questions or scenarios for Anna? Well, I've already thanked you once, but I'm going to thank you again. And also I appreciate the update on how the compensation philosophy is playing out. That was a big discussion for the board when it was passed. And so I think that part being included in the conversation is really helpful for us. We have no action item on this agenda item, so we will revisit this in October, which will be thrilling. And we are not going into closed session this evening. So next up is agenda building for next month, which includes finalizing the fiscal year 26 levy, an update from Becky on the EDI Pulse survey presentation. We will discuss staff appreciation week. We will also discuss and start to plan our visit to a library, which we do annually. And we will have an update on the FEIN and payroll change. Are there any other agenda items anyone would like to add? See none. And I will adjourn the meeting at 8:09 PM.